So I'm actually up, um, sort of up Kirkheaton, I guess. It's, it's sort of Kirkheaton, Lassell, it's Lassell Hall, actually. This is one of the very, very few places you can get a good visual access view of this mound now. And actually, I thought when I was up on Dalton Bank the other day, you could see over to Dunelm. But this really does give a view. I mean, you can see from the Warrior's Tomb mound on that valley. And you can actually see, there's still quite a lot of trees left, actually. Particularly up that side of Dalton there, on the top bit. Um, you can actually see, it's like a gateway to the river. Because it's actually a valley there, which you can see from where... So that's where they actually had the Yorkshire Show. I think it was 1904. That really is a great view of it. Um, and it's not far at all from this mound to there. And it's just the sort of gateway in the middle of it. I mean, there are more spectacular places like Castel in Wales and Castle Dinas and places like that. But the thing is, how could you have someone like Varley, who was excavating Castle Hill, which you can just see exactly over the... It's just, the horizon makes it just level above it. And it's that, that's the exact view you get when you're over on the bottom of Poole Hill, looking across. It makes that exact horizon with the hill coming up. Um, and that means something, that position and that view. It means something in relation to it position wise, which is why you can also see it when you're on the top of the mound. I don't know how you could be an archaeologist like Varley and be on such a significant and unique hillfort like Castle Hill, excavating it, and then so close to it, within 3.5 kilometres, is this mound? Um, even though it is only a straight edge mound, but it's 40 metres high. Um, and not say that it's not connected to that. And therefore, even if you don't say, well, it's a hillfort or it's a burial mound, it had the name Warrior's Tomb, so it has some significance. They still look at Silbury Hill now and they still think, you know, well, we don't exactly know what it was for or why they built it. But everyone goes to it, takes photos of it. It's one of the most renowned and visited places in England for prehistoric. Um, this mound is significant. It's, it's, it's hillfort size and it's different to all the others. And our Castle Hill hillfort, that is recognised as a hillfort, is also different to all the others because it is more of a longbarrow shape. And if you want confirmation of anything that shape, then there is Dunelm, which is that shape naturally. Why you wouldn't associate those together when you're investigating here is beyond belief. Particularly if you're an archaeologist, you will know about Shankton Ring and Sisbury Ring hillforts at Werving, which are about four kilometres apart. Two hillforts close together. Then at, um, Warminster, I think it is, you've got Bowlsbury, Scratchbury and Middle Hill. That's three. So you get them together. They're not single lone ones. Now, how you would ever excavate Castle Hill or be interested in it as a site and then ignore this one is beyond belief. I don't really know how it occurred, looking at all this urban sprawl. And it's very, it's highly unlikely that, you know, it would be a behemoth task to even think of it. Um, but how did it end up like this? Well, really it started with the reservoir by Dunelm. They put that reservoir by the side of Dunelm, you know, uh, where the natural resources go around it. That was the first thing, that reservoir, I think, in the late 17, early 18 hundreds. And then we've got the Victoria Tower. And then we get the Imperial Chemical Industries. And that is such a... The fact that ancient river maps actually has a river and flood plain coming on here that sometimes was quite wide, actually through sort of the middle of it. It actually, it actually went halfway, um, where the hill is. But on its, it says on its highest flow, it would, it would have gone wider and higher, you know? So, I mean, it does slope uphill a bit at that side of it, looking at here. It's more, it's more likely to have been on this side of it rather than all the way around it, looking at the angle now. But it did have a river coming on here that changed depth and width. And that, that gateway there, it is always almost like a gateway into the realm, really. It's a gateway into this whole valley here. Um, I just don't know why in 1930 at least, you know, when it got to 1930, why did they build on there? It seems to me that if you think of Uddersfield as the centre of Uddersfield and it's growing as a, as a centre, as a town centre, it's growing bigger, then it would grow out from there. But they put tramways out here to get trams and that out here. And then they just filled it in in between and packed it in, you know? Um, so it's kind of ridiculous. Just, and the fact is this, our 5% of the electorate is 15,000. And that is about five times more than other average places like, you know, North Shropshire or Dorchester or Vale of White Horse, places like that, that have managed to... When they've got ancient sites, it's still a lot of villages round their ancient sites and around about them. I mean, even Mairin, you might even say Mairin Castle and Osswesterrie have obstructed it. It might have been annoying for the council to not build around there. But the local people definitely like them and actually always kind of stand by protecting them. But I don't think those places are backward or less, um, you know, progressive than our place. I think Dorchester and Osswesterrie are brilliant places and so is the Vale of the White Horse. Um, we just seem to have exploded and it's the fact that, you know, we've got leapt in here and then it's all leapt straight on top of it. It, it, it was regarded at one point, you know, it was really regarded. And you can see just behind the houses there, where it kind of slopes up going towards it. And there's, that's where I actually took that photo of the tram. I've got an old photograph because that's the bit where the trees aren't there. And that's where it was with the tram, you can just see a bit of it. And there's another photo from this side, an old one as well, and there's actually some buildings there. It, I, I just, it, the fact of, and the thing that, Uddersfield, no one really cares now. No one's interested in it. It only seems to be pubs and Victoria Towers, a bit of a Union Jack style celebration. When this, that, the fact of that hillfort and this together so close. And then we've got the Dunelm site with the Pennine Ridge and the river coming on here, which is a major significant river that goes to the ocean. It just, at what stage did they disregard and lose sight? I mean, were they bought off or they paid off? And there were a lot of people, aren't too keen on building applications and this and that. And they end up getting offered money and then they accept it. And then they kind of change their mind after and said, oh, I wish I hadn't have done that, you know what I mean? It always seems to be money that buys them off. Um, or some sort of persuasion, oh, this place is going to be great. You're going to have an imperial chemical factory, you know, this tram's going to make it and all this and that one. It already had something and it was already amazing and brilliant anyway. Um, and these sites in close approximation together, you know, it's just beggars' belief, really. And just look at all now shrapnelled and, you know, it probably is an impossible mission. But, I mean, look at Dalton. Actually Dalton's meant to be, people say that Dalton's really built up. But if you look at that side of Dalton there, where the hillside is, there's a lot of countryside there. I don't know why that countryside wasn't preserved on the top of there. I don't know what happened when it was in 1960, sorry. I think it was 1960 when it happened. Somebody said it was around 1960. But it's, it's just this kind of unrestrained growth that we don't seem to be able to... And now the Tories are wanting to take away the right to object. If you're getting a look at the lust, look at it everywhere. It's just rammed packed with houses. Once you get to a certain threshold, surely there must be some law or legislation that's sensible that says, once you've filled in with urban development so far, then this area is now, you know, it's got too much building and you should look at areas that have got a lower electoral count, you know? Like they've only got like Perth count. There are places not too far from here that have got a lot less houses, do you know what I mean? Um, but they're still at it now at Melford. They're even starting to try and, oh, houses are popping up around Dunelm, you know? And, and this would have been, if you'd have had forest here and nature walks to the mound and to Castle Hill and to Melford and figured him with the Pennine Way, it could have been a really great, amazing walk. And I don't know how any councillors would not think that that, well, it's a positive thing, a nice thing. I've been looking at the Melford councillors list because I want to speak to them about Dunelm. Because Melford seems to have been relatively restrained with the building. But now it seems to be sort of caving in a bit more. And I feel, looking at the councillors, I haven't met them yet. They, they do seem like they probably are in favour of keeping a nice countryside area as much as possible. And it looks to be a few councillors who do seem more, that I would say, they look like they're a little bit more strategically placed to be representing the builders and the plumbers and electricians who just won't work. But when you've got an electoral count that's gone up to fifteen, fifteen and a half thousand, that's only 5%, you've got more builders than other areas. So that means the more builders want more jobs. But we've got less space available. So then you're really going overboard then. If you've only got a 5% electoral, you know, that's 2,500, you haven't got as many builders there and they haven't got as many jobs to want to do. So your rate of growth is less. At this stage now, with the percentage of population and we've got more builders than anywhere else, this is why we've got to a stage where they're having to try and take away the right to object because they want to carry on making money and do the jobs, you know? And now they're wanting to do this greenway on here with bikes. But they've put all them talking buses on which are really darts, D1 darts, which is not very nice. And they've got all sinister pictures on them, really don't like that, you know? Um, this mound was recognised. It was recognised in the, in that book by Chas P Hobkirk. And there are weird things going on, like you end up getting Kirkwood Hospice. And it seems to be the builder who built those houses who tied in with Kirkwood Hospice. And then the D shape on the top of the houses, which is exactly like that Alex Hog map, the old Alex Hog map, when he, in West Riding, he puts the D exactly here in West Riding. And then further forward to the future, we end up getting a D shape put on the top of what's... It clearly is an ancient site. Whether they've identified exactly what it's for, whether it is a hillfort or whether it is a religious site or a mound, it doesn't matter. It clearly and obviously, without doubt, is connected to Castle Hill. Because why would you have such a shaped mound with such a platform on top? Whether you can find evidence of habitation or not, it might have been, the evidence might have been removed. It wouldn't be that close to Castle Hill. It wouldn't be that you can exactly see Castle Hill over the ridge, um, in it, with the horizon and it going across the top perfectly level, just like when you look across from another significant position, which is on Poole Hill and the hill across the top, it aligns it properly. And then you've got that alignment on the top of the ridge at West Nabb, which aligns it perfectly, straight through the alignment line with Castle Hill and Dunelm. It, it, and the, the whole, the whole setting, setting of it, this was a magical, special place because of the features, it was selected. And when you go up to where the Freemasons Arms was, Upper Opton, you really can see that when Castle Hill is perfectly in the middle, symmetrical, in a very beautiful place with the Pennine Ridge behind it. And all that beauty has been removed. The visual access was removed from the Freemasons Arms. Someone ended up developing it and I don't know how it happens. We don't know because we can't prove it. But it's the fact that it happened and it was a visual access point. It was shut down. It was made private flats. Even the people who lived there didn't have big windows put in the side of the good view. You can't turn around in the entrance. Only the guy who is reportedly meant to be a football team manager got a big mansion there with gargoyles. He gets the view. But the council never put a picnic view area there for visual access to that well-known spectacular view, which is actually probably as significant as being on the hill itself, looking around. And it was the Freemasons Arms. The word free symbolises freedom. The word free house, a public house is for the public, free, that was on Castle Hill, got pulled down under very strange circumstances. Again, it was all smoke and mirrors, they built it too big and all this and that. Things add up. There's too many things not quite right. You cannot ignore that. Even if you say, I ain't got evidence, I ain't got names, I need exact names, I need the exact dates. Who planned this, who planned that? How things like that happen? They don't want you to find out who did it or if there was anyone behind it who could have orchestrated it. It's the fact that it happened. It's the meaning of it. What is the meaning of this place? Its significance, importance to the past cultures? What affiliations and camp affiliations does it have? We know that this area took side with the parliamentarians in the civil war, with the Roundheads, not with the Royalists. It wasn't in the good books with the Royals. In fact, um, the ancestors of Ramsden ended up going to the Tower of London. So we've told, if you read it, that's what I read on Wikipedia anyway, if it's right or not. And then Ramsden ends up having to, he actually serves in the military for a while. But then, um, he, he comes out into politics. He goes down to Glastonbury Tower, which is near Taunton as an MP. That's a, that's one of the other places that's got a tower on a hill, believe it or not. Goes down there and then he ends up getting persuaded into this tower thing, right? Well, there's a reservoir claws a chunk out of Dunelm, which I believe is a religious site. Because our island, England, is the only place that has the long barrows, the British Isles. Dr Gail Bradbuck professes that long barrows are unique to these islands and the other islands have dolmens or cairns or the temples around. Now, where would you get the idea from to make a longbarrow into a long shape? It's from the natural forms. And Dunelm is one of those natural forms, it has to be. And all the long barrows are more or less around the perimeter of the islands, around the coast or slightly inland a bit, Cotswold is near River Seven anyway, you know? It, it, it's, and we don't know how many of them were completely destroyed. I don't think the river archaeologists wanted to acknowledge the importance of this site. I don't think the Romans told the truth about the jury stronghold being Anglesey. I think it was a decoy. Because there's not any massive, huge significant site there, Anglesey. Luckily, there are quite a few, um, surviving, um, sites, mounds with chambers. Um, maybe they just left those, you know, I don't know. You, I think it would, it's got to be rational. I mean, there are professionals who will back up the theory as well. When we start talking about religion and religious sacraments and things like that. We've got experts, we've got Dennis McKenna, doctorate. We've got the Imperial College, Robin Carhart. They're all experts on these things. It exists, it existed. There was an established religion that had recognised, um, things in use. We could go into that subject. Now, I have been to, I've been to North Yorkshire. I've been to Richmond. I've been to the place that's eight mile north of Richmond, where they claim that Queen Katermandula was. I've been to that site and seen the surrounding area, there's some outer perimeter ditches. I've been all over England my whole life, that's what I've done. I've been to a lot of hillforts and sites. There are some very spectacular ones, right? It, if you had a very big tribe that was based around this Elmet area, in the Arthurian times it was called Elmet. But we've got this Agbrig, right? Which is linked to the Brigantes, which means bridge or elongation. Castle Hill is a bridge or elongation shape and so is Dunelm. It's not coincidence. All that Robin Hood's grave story about shooting an arrow, which turned up after the Norman conquest, a couple of hundred, a hundred years or two after that. Apparently the earthworks on Castle Hill get changed into that bow shape, bow. And where does the bow blow, points straight at Warrior's Tomb? Which is, they used to call it a tomb like a burial. But then you got the old Robin Hood shoots an arrow from a bow to a tomb. It, it's not coincidence. I don't know whether I'm the stupid one for wanting to talk about it. But when you do try and talk to other people about it, they don't really know about it, aren't looked into it. I'm not sure whether, I'm not really 100% sure why. But it, it, there are reasons. Now, I've talked a little bit about, um, you know, the Roundheads and the civil war, things like that. Some sort of reconciliation, we were a parliamentarian area. It's clearly evident that this is the Imperial Chemical Industries. Now, if I wanted to go and take a photograph or something from that river in this perfect entrance that is formed between these two points, when the river goes past it to come to this mound, I can't. Because that is private chemical industry property and I cannot even access that river. I can't even get really visual access from here either. It's been, visual access has been removed. It, it, a lot of the visual access from these sites, I've had to come up here. The farmers field's over there, we're not too sure, there's a lot of people walked up here. It's got lots of well-worn trails. I'm not doing any harm. Um, and I'm filming this for petition anyway, you know? There's a little bit of a plastic fence. But the people who live over there, but there's a nice view from the other field. I was doing, I was alright for myself, but that's their private land. They don't, they're saying, oh yeah, well, school kids coming through here, but we shouldn't really be on and all this and that, like going about knocking walls down, don't touch the walls. It, there is a footpath near there which has got an alright view. But all the visual views, we've had visual access removed. Visual access was removed at the Freemasons. There are strange circumstances of a very big important house that has got the view, private again, with gargoyles there. Freemasons, beam free, Freemasons Arms, right? Free house, public house, now gone, the other one gone. It, it adds up. Now, I don't want to get controversial. I don't want to have sensitive subjects. But that's what it is. I'm here, I'm in Uddersfield. What am I interested in, ancient sites? We've got ancient sites, right? I'm going to start properly looking at them and studying them. Because I've been around England a bit and I like ancient sites and I want to know about ours. I'm learning about ours, I'm pursuing it, I'm looking at it. And this is what my observations are finding. This is what the observations are finding. In Ireland now, you've got to pay 20 euros to even submit observations. If they're building a massive housing development, they automatically get permission. And I thought Ireland was meant to be a bit holding back with the development because they were keeping it green and, 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 and natural. But it seems the opposite. Um, the council have got to be asked to step in if they want to stop any big developments now. If it's over like, you know, 400 or 500 homes or whatever. I think, how can we do archaeology on there? Apparently Varley wrote a little bit about that. I, I've read the Varley excavations for Castle Hill. I don't remember him writing too much about that. I haven't got around to reading it. But Hobkirk mentions it. It is the liberty shape. It's got to be, you cannot, only, only, uh, 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 someone who's ignorant would even claim that is not connected to Castle Hill for whatever use. Silbury Hill, even expert archaeologists don't confirm its exact use or purpose. But yet, everyone loves it. Everyone's taking photos of it all day from all over the world. There are websites of ancient stone circles groups who travel the world to take photos of them. Um, yet they're still scratching their heads. It, this is a 40 metre high hill in a liberty shape that's even big enough to have dwellings on. Whether we can find any evidence of it, we can't now, they've built over it. We don't know who went up there and had a look around. We don't know whether what camp the archaeologists were affiliated with. This is the problem now when we've got building developments. We've got affiliations with builders. We've got councils, favourite builders and relationships who they like to give jobs to and award for doing a good job and reward. They like to keep business going for them. But our 5% is 15,000. In Osswesterrie, this area here, right? If you wind it back to 1930 in that photograph, not 1960, 1930, this has already overtaken Osswesterrie and Dorchester by 1930. It had overtaken those places. And if you look at the photos I'll show you of Osswesterrie and Dorchester, you do not get any builders complaining they haven't got any jobs. There are still building jobs to do, there are still plumbers, there are still electricians. But they haven't jumped on the site. The town's got media centres, cinemas, restaurants, it's got computers. It's got everything that any town or city has got to offer. But it doesn't have a complete and total shrapnelled mess. Now, how can Kier, Balfour Beatty, Marsden Ben Stephens builders at Tyburn Lane, on a tight, you know, and these names of streets that these people live on, it's almost intimidating to the council. How dare the council challenge them on their tax returns for 18 businesses they've got on the books for different buildings to get tax, around tax laws, you know? How can, what do these people want more now to be jammed out? Where more can you fit houses here, please? Where can we fit them now? I mean, it, it, I, it's just got to a stage where there's no, it's just, there's no reins or control. And then we've got buses going, next stop, next stop, next stop. Ignore the stop, let the driver take you where you're going, you know? And they're wanting to not even have people voting without passports or driving licences now. Things like that, they're not really wanting, it's all for the money. This is really where the Tories are going because it's now all for big business and profit. I don't think there's any pride in the area or countryside left. How can they be? Because everybody, you know, everybody and everybody. This country had a indigenous people who were kind, loving, caring, go out of their way for each other and happy. And then when you get something ruined around you and no one helps you, then you get people saying, oh, well, no one helped me, so why should I help anyone else? It, it gets to the core of the goodness of people and then it's infectious. And then it's like on the bus, oh, next stop, next, ignore the stop, ignore the stop, ignore the stop. You know, people are on the internet going, please, please help me get signatures, you know? Stop now, now, stop them. And then, you know, just ignore the stop, ignore the stop. And then it's just deploy, deploy, deploy. That's where we're at now with Dunelm at Melford Cop. I'm seeing the houses pop up, Ben, God knows who. And then there's even one or two farmhouse, there's new ones popping up the other side. And those are the magical fields around it, the growing fields. And the main section of them got the reservoir put on it to write it off. It did. That reservoir got put on there and wrote it off. And then they even had to claw into the side of it and have a dig at it like they clawed into this. It's like putting a scar on it. It's like stealing the soul out of a book, tearing a page out of a book, just to steal the soul out of it. And now it's got the letter D put on it, the dunce. It, why would you want to do that to your own area? And then they get the people, it's through the influences of television and marketing, where they're not bothered, oh, we just want to go to McDonald's and then we want to go to the pub and bang my pint glass on. And it's, I don't want to say it because, well, I, all my life, I've known people for being happy and friendly here and caring, but it starts to make me think like the Gremlins movie when they get water on them and then Gizmo gets water on him and then it's just like, you know, it's a little bit like that. I don't mean it in a bad way, but no one's wanting to help or get control of that situation. And this is, it's not about me, it's about the area. But then when you say, well, we don't care about the area, we only care about, you know, this or that, our own lot. But this is your lot, this is where we are. Don't you want to be able to open your curtains and have something beautiful there? How could you resolve it? Well, it, it could be. The beautiful valley in here, I mean, why look at all the green on top of that ridge there? And up there, everyone could have had houses on those bits up there. And this could have been the lush forest with the ancient sites in the middle. Why didn't that happen? Even that's a bridge shape going out, that ridge there, almost like, that's a bridge itself there. The Brigantes Bridge, you know? It, it doesn't make sense to me. And it, we've got a 15, um, a 15,505%. So we've got a very large percent of builders who want jobs. And that means they want more jobs than the average place has only got 2,500 or a 5,005% electorate. And, but we've got less space than them. So we've got more builders here and less space. The, we need to get the Green Party or independence or someone who brings some legislation in through government that says, right, the legislation needs to say, if your electorate exceeds fifteen thousand, that is it. You, you've, 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 you've reached capacity. And building needs to be diverted to the small ones. Now, some of those small ones might have nice areas and ancient sites, what they wanna protect, but you don't have to build it on the ancient site. We could have really had this many houses if they'd have been put in the right places. Like all at Opton and on there, even saw going up to the edge of the top of Dalton Bank maybe. And then there's all Jerusalem Golf Club area, all that nice countryside in there as well. And then people could have come walks to it, ancient sites, why build on the random? It, they're not doing it other places. It, it doesn't make sense to me and I don't think I'm wrong for saying that, I'm pointing it out. And there are actually, I'm just looking at the, the UN, United Nations now for religious sites. There's United Relations Law and there's United Relations Facilitation and procedures to get ancient sites and religious sites protected, right? You can get protection for them from United Nations level, right? And that's, that's high level. It's, we've, we've left Europe, but the United Nations is not the Euro, is it? It's different. The U, the UN is not the EU, right? I, I believe that if you, we, if you get written documents from professionals, papers, like Robin Carr, right, even though he's at Imperial College London, because apparently they're the only ones who can study, you know, these things, Imperial Chemicals Industry, Imperial College. You can get those people like McKenna and people like that. Um, and, and various other speakers, professionals like, um, Hugh Newman, you know, Andy Burnham, these sort of people. And you can get them to confirm, this is no ordinary hillfort. It is definitely a longbarrow shape and it wouldn't be, if it was just by itself, it's with Dunelm. They're, they're not apart. And the exact measurement from Warrior Tomb to there is exactly double the distance. It's not like, you know, three, three quarters or one seventh or whatever, it's exactly twice the distance. And the alignment, watch Howard Crowhurst's sacred geometry on Megalithomania. Watch Gail Bradbrook, these people kno- know about these alignments. You won't go on Poole Hill, which was another longbarrow shape when you look across and have the exact Castle Hill being with the exact land horizon protruding up in the exact same manner from that view if it wasn't meant to mean something significant, you know? Um, you know, this is meant to be like the burial mounds. And highly likely a settlement which is in the form of a religious mound. And we know, that's what those mounds are, the religious mounds, they're all, we have them in this country. So the fact that rather currently could have had different fortifications like Old Oswestry, we don't know what happened to it because they didn't properly, I don't think they properly investigated it or wanted us to know about it, right? What's happened is we've got a forty metre high mound which is clearly big enough for settlement on the top of it, but it's a little bit more religious shaped because it's more like a, one of the, the mount tombs. But it's also big enough for occupation of a settlement. What have we got here? Oh, a, another hillfort, but it's more like a longbarrow which happens to be one of the sites that they have for religious, they have the religious longbarrows, the little ones. And what's that? It's a more longbarrow shape and hillfort. So we've got a burial mound hillfort and a longbarrow hillfort, and then we've got Dunelm which is the natural um, formation of what the longbarrows are based on and copied off, but natural, growing, it's like a living monument. Now, if they ain't got religious connections to the ancient Iron Age cultures and before, I don't know what has. Just one little longbarrow here or one little longbarrow there, Stonehillton. Where are the, where are the big ones? Where did they come from? Where did they get their idea from? You know, oh, well, there might have been something going on in the Brigante's tribe and the river. I mean, do we know another place where there are three main sites by an important river? Well, yeah, in Ireland, North Doff and Newgrange by the river, where does it go to the ocean? Look at this river, oh yeah, it goes where to Hull. And it happens to be at the exact more or less same alignment as that river that I've just talked about, um, in Ireland, what coincidence? Um, and then, you know, the, the entrance from the river, whether or not we had a river coming down here and to what extent, I don't know, or how far back, but i- in the fact it goes past the mound. But then you've got other things like on TV, you know, you've got, um, Brookside Close, it's like a pun. And here we've got a housing estate on the top which is classic, um, Brookside Close style. And it's got a brook at the side which is close, it's almost like we're being mocked, like the letter D on the top. The visual access points were closed down, art places have been knocked down. What is the word, free house, public house, were free. The parliamentarians and the roundheads, you know, um, it, it's almost like the symbols of things that were free or represented freedom or public were removed. Now we've got a tower which is locked most of the time and you gotta pay to go in it. That's not free, is it? And the premise of getting the tower was to provide shelter all the time when you're up there. Cause it's windy, which you can't do because it's locked half the time and you gotta pay to go in. It's not providing shelter for anyone. At Glastonbury Tower, you can get shelter because there are no doors on it and you can walk straight under it twenty-four hours a day. You know, it, 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 the, I don't, I'm not making it up, I'm not pulling this out of the ether. There are these things that have happened. Now, if you don't think that there is a mind behind it that has orchestrated it and planned it, if you don't believe that, fair enough. But these positions have been shut down and blocked off. We have this Imperial Chemical Industries, this was parliamentarian, the opposite camp. The Freemasons Arms View's been shut down, one of the major ones, did they build a picnic area there? No, they built a quarry and messed up all the soil. They messed up the side of Dunelm, dug it out, you know. Um, then Castle Hill's got a tower on it and then we've got houses built on there. And then the access to the river's blocked off, you can't even go and stand around the river on there because it's private. It, there's something to this and no person would deny that. It's not about being sensitive, it's not about, um, you know, it, it's about the truth. And seeing and understanding these sites in the area. And if you're in your own bubble, eating McDonald's or looking into a pint glass, I'm not knocking those people, but they've got their own issues in their life, fair enough, but aren't all those issues a result of this mass, um, explosion of growth? Which then, you know, you, you got a lot of builders who want a lot of jobs when there ain't a lot of place left to build. And then they're wanting to move the King James's School. Oh, then I make a video flying through that valley into beautiful. And the first thing that pops into the councils then is, oh, look at that nice beautiful valley, the only bit that's left unscathed. Let's move the school there, make it big, get all the kids in, trampling around. And then they gives an excuse to put loads of extra street furniture on there and make the village a mess when it was, you know, part of a village that was still relatively traditional. That's just the wrong thing to do. When there are schools like Skelman Fort which are in the countryside which could be made bigger, when they've got buses going to Stars All, the uni, there's lots of places in Stars All that could use for that school instead and have it with the university, there are plenty of football fields there. I really don't know what the council are doing. I want to bring the United Nations in and you might think that I'm absolutely nuts, but there are provision in there for protecting religious sites. I believe these are religious sites. Where else in England are there two longbarrow giant forms in a formation that are totally unique from the real forts with the Pennheim Ridge in the backdrop with that view? With the third site which is settlement size for me as I, unique. And also religi- it's like a combo of religious significance with hillfort. With the entrance to the whole veil there from the river, uh, it, 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 there is some historic heritage significance in these sites. And I want to get the Council of British Archaeology to say something or do something. I want to get the, um, you know, Natural England to do something or say something. I want to get, you know, some, um, you know, um, of these charities. But it's a big ask and it's controversial and they might not wanna touch it because of that reason. But the fact is, why didn't they step in when it was getting rubbish, when it was getting ruined? Where were these charities and trusts stepping in before they put their houses on there? Kirklees Council weren't formed. We were formed on the first of April, now I've found out other councils have formed on the first of April. Why do they have councils formed on the first of April? We've got the Dalton Bank site there with the ridge overlooking it, there, there are tiers. Looking down from Castle Hill, there are these majestic tiers on the edge of the hills, all these greenery tiers. Now, Andrew Cooper, I'm making this representation to Melform because I want, we need to protect Dunelm now from any more building being put any, anywhere near it. And I know that some of the councillors won't wanna do that because they've, they've got the favourite builders that they wanna look after, but we need to stop. Andrew Cooper, I was in a Zoom meeting with a councillor and this is Green Party derogative and pla- uh, prerogative and plans. And they were talking about, we want green avenues, we want rewilding, we want restoration of greenery. That was on the table and it was a legitimate subject being discussed in a true, um, professional meeting about our area with legitimate Green Party politicians present, I was there as well. So for me to suggest rewilding and green avenues, they was already on the table. So for me to suggest to get them around here, we've got the ancient site, we've got heritage here. So if we're gonna do it, it was on the table, I haven't pulled it out of the ether from nowhere, but I've, I've just realised that that would fit with, um, what was on the table then. Cause we, we've, when we've got the sites for it. And, and, and if the count, Kirklees Council are not going to, um, you know, be enthusiastic about that, I think that we could contact the United Nations of which we're a member and I want us put this, I've got the paperwork for the religious, um, site protection. And it starts talking about, it actually starts talking about, um, discrimination against religion and religious sites. Now, I'm serious. I have got evidence for discrimination against religious sites of being clawed into, put a D for dunce on it when it's clear the liberty hat shape and then on the old map by Alex Hogg, it's got a D over the same place. And it was that camp, Alex Hogg was in the Imperial Camp who drew the map. There's Imperial Chemicals Industry there blocked the river off. The Freemasons Arms been shut down, the Free House on there's been shut down, I ain't pulling out of nowhere, it happened. I ain't conjuring it up, it happened. Now, these people like to do things that mean something, that say something, that make a statement. My evidence for that is that the side of the M forty-two or the M six, I haven't been down there for a while, but they've got a big statue that's a big white knot. It's a big sculpture, it's white, but it's tied in a knot as if good is somehow crooked or not straight, you know, and, and the government have done that, it's art, art is to be interpreted. Now, I'm interpreting this, it's not a good interpretation unfortunately. The people on there haven't got visual access to the valley around it, we haven't got visual access to them. What's the benefit of having houses on there if everything around it when you're looking out from it's ruined? Just for the stays I've leapt on, we leapt on it. It, it doesn't make sense to me. The, the side of Dunelm got clawed in, they put the reservoir there. I am finding things that I believe that the heritage has been attacked from a camp that mainly came in post ten sixty-six. When, oh, that, it's not, this island wasn't their heritage of that lineage. Therefore, I don't think that they really had a priority or prerogative to celebrate it in a manner that would, um, celebrate it and, and, and esteem it greater than their own heritage. Which is why we sing the national anthem and salute the flag and we've got, you know, beefeaters running around in circles doing marches. If, if they started recognising and celebrating this, it would purport that it was good or decent or that it meant something good or decent and now it doesn't. I think we were led to believe that we were gonna be great and good. Oh yeah, we'll get you the chemical factory, we'll get you the Royal Army in Leeds. But look, what is it but the celebration of a mess? Really? All we can celebrate is, wow, we've now got an electorate, there's fifteen thousand, we've beat everyone's score. It might, you know, maybe the footballers might want to equal Man City and Man United's population, you know. Um, but does everybody wanna do that? And when you actually ask these people, do they want the builders to bang the next housing estate up? The locals are upset. They're forming local community groups and they're on Facebook saying, what can we do about it? What can we do about it? And there never seems to be anything that they can do, they're not happy about it. It's almost like we're having it forced on ourselves. And that, I'm being honest, I don't wanna fall out with anybody over it, these are my observations. I don't think that I'm wrong and I swear I'm not lying. And, you know, heritage might not be anything to people who are, who are more interested in the cinema, but there are lots, there are people who are interested in walking. It's because if it was a beautiful area and something beautiful, I think the young people would like it and would enjoy it. You know, it, 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 you could, you get into that mind state when you, it's like when I, when I said, oh, those people who got some dumped on them, built around them and then when I went asking for help, their signatures, they were, they, they said, oh, I'm not helping you because nobody helped us. Now, that really is what's happening now. I'm saying, oh guys, you know, come on, can we sort this out? And then, no, no, why should we, you know, nobody helped us, you know, it's just a mess, you know, and, and, and that is, is that what you wanna cultivate more of that? That's why you end up needing to, all these new people and builders, even the builders are building electric security gates around their houses and walls because they're building on other people's property, ruining their area. And then when people come out to complain, they've got the security gates on, it's building. This is the whole Facebook admin block button culture. And I don't know what Marzukberg's doing because he's alright, Jack, he's got his house in Hawaii. Um, you know, on an island out of the way. Well, I don't know what Nick Clegg's doing at Facebook. Um, at the moment, it, it, you know, Elon Musk's meant to be saying that he's gonna make twenty-three speech or whatever, but he's doing loads of robots and space missions, you know, it, it, it's, we, we need something done. And I think this conversation is important, serious, valid, and I haven't made anything up. There's, there's lots of documents by professionals and experts that I've quoted and my own observations. And I think there's been a cover-up over it and I think something needs to be done. We, we, the talks from Melform about Dunelm, I'm not sat here at Dunelm, I went there the other day. I've come here to record it because it, it needs to be seen in context. And this was partly, something along these lines was on the table in the Green Party meeting with a professional politician. So I'm not too deep in the water to even suggest it, I'm not that out of depth to, to talk about it really because it saw was on the table, right? The, um, green avenues and regeneration. So if you say, well, whereabouts in Odesfield and you say, well, we've got these ancient heritage sites, then it, it's kind of a no brainer really, you know? And then we've got a century rebellion protesting outside, um, Sydenter anyway, you know, protesting out there against chemicals. So that's what I've got to say and I'm gonna send this into the Melform councillors. I know that they might not wanna hear about this area, but you have to because you need to evaluate the attached evidence and context of why we need to save Dunelm. It's a living ancient site. You might not understand the symbology of it or what it means, but, you know, you've got people at Silverhill, Silverhill still saying, they don't exactly know what it means, but everyone goes takes photos of it and it's got the highest protection you can get. And it's very old. That's what we've got, it's old and we know that it's, these two sites are connected and part of the heritage, how could they not be?